For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all will note up here that there are five of us tonight. There are seven of us that are appointed to the commission, so we have a clear quorum. Eric Ranka and Jim Davis could not be here tonight. They were our last two for the seven. So we're going to proceed with township business. Is there, next item is additions or deletions to the agenda? Anybody want to change the agenda from that presented? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion from Jay, support from?
Support.
Brian. Call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. The first item to consider are the minutes from June 20th. That was our last meeting. Did anyone have any comments or concerns about these minutes? Dan?
No.
Brian?
None.
Jay?
None for me.
Steve?
Nope.
As a secretary, I'm sure you... I didn't expect any comments from you.
When it comes from her, they're perfect.
Thank you, Lori. Entertained a motion to approve, as submitted. Motion from Jay, support?
Support.
Steve, call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Lori, as usual.
Thank you.
Can always count on high-quality work. We appreciate it. Next item is public comment, an opportunity for citizens to speak with the commission about any item not on the agenda. This public comment is the short public comment. If anybody has any extended public comment, we'll take care of it after the chair's report. So I would ask if anybody has comments, please limit them to two minutes, and we'll hear your comments and concerns. Anybody want to speak? I'm sorry, say again, I couldn't hear you. Yes, yes, please. We will take extended public comment after the chair's report. Anybody else wish to speak with the commission? Seeing no hands, we'll move on. Pre-application conference for a new building on Macomb Street. A contractor office and a storage area. The applicant, applicants plural, are Edward Perry and Trina Martin. They live at 8550 Macomb, on Grossoio. The location of the lot in question is Lot 11 of Grayswood subdivision. The common description, it's a vacant lot about 200 feet west of Park Lane and Macomb intersection, and it's on the north side of the street. It is between two residences, 8550, which was the address of Edward Perry and Trina Martin, and 8532, which is to the east. The proposal is to build about an 1,800-square-foot building to be used as a contractor office with an attached storage area. The offices are on the first and second floor, and there also are garages both on the first floor and the second floor. The lot is about 50 feet wide, and so there is proposed parking both at the front and at the rear. The zoning is Macomb Street District, MSD. The relevant ordinances for consideration are Article 7, Macomb Street District, and Article 21, which is a site plan review, since this is an approved application or an approved use in that district. The process under the site plan review is a three-step, or sorry, a two-step process. First, a pre-application conference with us, which provides an initial review and feedback to the applicant, and then a final planning commission review and a planning commission decision. We are at step one, pre-application, and the planning commission will not act on this tonight. Brian?
Go over the site conditions and some, kind of a summary of my review comments as well. So, starting off, just sort of recap everything you just presented. This is our subject site, vacant 50-foot lot, north side of Macomb Street. As you noted, the use that's proposed is a principal permitted use in the MSD, and our applicable ordinances are Article 7 and Article 21 of the zoning ordinance, more specifically 7.2A, which identifies this as a principal permitted use, and Article 21, as you've already noted, which requires full site plan review for the project. Again, we're at the first step here, planning commission, pre-application conference. No action is expected tonight. However, there are a number of site plan elements to be discussed. Some of them are discretionary standards, where the planning commission may or may not accept the proposed condition. Some of them are non-discretionary, which essentially means the applicant must comply with the ordinance. Here's a quick overview of the plan. Here's the 50-foot lot we spoke of. Here's the proposed building. It is 1,830 square foot for the footprint. There is a total gross square footage. I roughed it out at about maybe 2,300. There's a small-ish office space on the upper floor as well that adds to that 1,830. As Chairman referenced, there's parking in both the back and the front, so we have two proposed parking spaces in the front, which you can see here. One conventional space, one barrier-free space. Drive access around the east side of the building, and then because of the nature of the use with employees and employee vehicles, two of the spaces would then be internal to the overhead door, the garage area of the building itself. We do have the minimum necessary four parking spaces. Two of them are inside the building, two of them are at the front. There's also, as you can see on here, some landscape elements. So there's a buffer zone that's required to the north. There are some screen plantings proposed in this area. There are also buffer zones proposed on each, or required on each side. There really is not much in the way of plantings on the east. More on that later. That's really because of the drive aisle, the narrow drive aisle, excuse me, side of the building. And then there are green belt requirements at the front of the site to help screen the parking lot and to try to just dress up and enhance the streetscape of Macomb Street. Next slide is just a quick look at the proposed building elevations. So in the package, we received a front and a side view. We still need to see the rear view. We also, as you can see on here, there's a reference, so the side of the building, and I'm assuming the rear of the building, is predominantly covered with a siding material, however, it's not specified in terms of what type of siding that may be. Obviously, on Macomb Street, we'd like to see something a little bit nicer. Hardy plank, the cement, fiber cement board as siding, that would be at least an improvement over some other, not quite as high-quality siding materials. Look at the front, and we do have, as required in Macomb Street, we do have our main entrance off the front of the building, so this is the entrance door. We do have nice window projections in terms of the front facade space. The upper floor is a covered but open porch area. You can see on the side view that it's not fully enclosed. There is a decorative railing across the sides and across the front, but this is an open, unenclosed space. And as I mentioned, we need a little bit more detail on these drawings. Better depiction of materials. I've also requested a material and color sample board as we progress to make sure that the commission has a full understanding of what's being proposed. So now I'll get into the comments from my full review letter, which is dated October the 12th of 2016. So back to that front parking for a moment. There's a 25-foot setback that's required. As proposed, they are slightly deficient on that, so this is one of those non-discretionary items. The applicant must comply with this. So I've put together just a couple of thoughts that may help to mitigate this potential situation, or at least mitigate that back issue. So they're at about 20, so we need to gain approximately five feet. So one option is simply the way the site lays out. Removed the one space, and if there's a way to relocate that space to the rear of the site, then obviously we can expand that green belt by roughly 10 feet, and then we no longer have an issue. I did think about, because the barrier-free space takes up so much room, I thought that maybe we could relocate that, but I think for the purposes of a barrier-free space, we need that right next to the entrance. So I don't think relocating that is really a viable option, but I do think relocation would be an option. I also note in the letter, their spaces as shown, and the loading space for the barrier-free space, these are all 10-foot wide. Your ordinance requires minimum nine-and-a-half foot wide. If we were to reduce the conventional space by half a foot, not a lot, but we gain half a foot, and then I do need to double-check with Rains on the minimum ADA design standards, and I may look to Dan and Brian to bail me out on this one too, because I always forget. I think you have to have one van-accessible space, and I can never recall exactly what the minimum dimensions are. Is it eight and eight?
Eight and eight.
So my other thought was, thank you, Dan, I knew you would have that answer. So the reality is, they're showing 20, and we need 16, so we can actually make up four feet of that setback by simply reducing these down to the minimum. And then if we take the 10-foot space down to a nine-and-a-half-foot space, we make up four-and-a-half feet of the five-foot deficiency. Potentially, maybe there's a way to expand this to get that extra six inches into maybe a slight reduction in that sidewalk, at least on the west side of the site. We don't have to redesign the site tonight, let me clarify that, but I wanted to put forth what I felt were some, maybe some viable options to help offset that one item, because again, that is a non-discretionary matter. They have to meet that standard. Basically, they either need to relocate a space or redesign the front such that they meet the 25. And I think it's doable. I think either option is not... Next one is just a detailed item that's needed. There's a requirement, in the Macomb Street District, we have two coverage-based ratios. One is the building coverage, there's a max building coverage. There's also a maximum impervious surface coverage you can have covering the lot. The building coverage is within ordinance, however, we do not have impervious surface calculation. Applicant, make sure that with our parking lot, our drive aisle, and our building, that we stay within the 80% coverage limitation for that. I mentioned the front yard parking. The setback is non-discretionary, however, the ability to place parking in the front yard is discretionary. One of the goals of Macomb Street is to locate parking in the sides or rear. However, understanding that some of the sites on Macomb Street are rather narrow, this being one of them, a 50-foot lot, there is an allowance where the planning commission can grant front yard parking so long as that minimum setback is met. So one of the discretionary items for your consideration with this project would be the allowance for some amount of parking within the non-required front yard. At this point, there's currently two spaces shown. I mentioned that there are some alternatives that may either reduce a bit of those or potentially relocate one space, so there might only be one space in the front, but that'll be an item planning commission would have to allow with your discretion. The other is the side parking setback. Conventional requirement is 10 feet, but again, understanding potentially narrow sites and other site issues to deal with, planning commission does have the discretion to reduce the side parking setback. So in this case, that west-side parking lot is about four-and-a-half feet from the west-side property line, so that would be another item where planning commission discretion is requested by the applicant, and that would be an item that you, again... I've already mentioned the width of the spaces. So probably, I don't want to say the biggest issue, but I'll go ahead and say the biggest issue. Probably the traffic circulation in the drive aisle. We have a curb cut, another curb cut on Macomb Street. The entry to the site should function without any real trouble. The curb cut is plenty wide. The access into the site, there's no real issues there. Access into these spaces, there's plenty of circulation room to get in and out of these spaces. Again, they need to be tweaked, but still plenty of room. However, getting to the rear of the site, we come along the east side, and this is an eight-foot-wide driveway that's proposed to get from the front of the site to the back of the site. Had similar situations before where we've allowed some discretion to reduce from a conventional two-way, full-width drive aisle, you know, based upon the use and based upon, obviously, comments from public safety. In this case, you know, 24 feet would be the conventional width, and we're going down to eight. So I don't believe there's going to be a lot of traffic through this site, but I definitely have some concern about an eight-foot-wide drive aisle. The idea that there might be a head-on conflict is relatively unlikely. It's not a huge site, it's not a huge building, not a lot of traffic. You know, were this a grocery store? Yeah, we'd have an issue with that. But my concern is really tied to even just if eight foot is enough width for vehicles to safely pass through there. Keep in mind, that eight foot is shown essentially from, there's a two-foot curb line and then to the building. So any larger vehicles, understanding the nature of the business and the use, I've got to anticipate that there's going to be some trucks potentially, I don't know if they'll have any equipment on trailers, that's where I can see potentially running into some eight-foot width. We certainly don't want vehicles damaging the building. We don't want to have issues with vehicles, you know, potentially hopping the curb, crossing over to the east. So the reality is that that eight foot is pretty narrow, and certainly like to see it increased. This is a very narrow site, there's no doubt about that. One of the things that we've talked about, we talked about this with the applicant at one of our early meetings, and I wanted to bring it up for the commission's attention again tonight. It didn't make my letter as a formal comment, but I do think it's worth at least engaging in the discussion since we have the commission and the petitioner here, is the fact that petitioner also owns the residence to the west, so there is an existing curb cut and driveway on the east side of the residence, which basically is in the middle of the two sites. So there is some potential for maybe a shared driveway with the curb cut and potentially a shared drive, even if it needed to, if we needed an easement and it needs to be larger to crisscross over the property line. Potentially, if you were to sort of reverse or flip-flop the site plan such that the drive were to the west as opposed to the east, and we share the curb cut to the residence, I think there's a potential that the site may function quite a bit better, truthfully. I know, I know the petitioner had some concerns about that when we met and talked about this originally, but depending on the level of concern from the commission, you know, we may need to remedy this eight-foot drive aisle. And the other, I think one of the other positives we get from that potential solution is we get another curb cut off Macomb Street, too. This would basically be a home with a relatively narrow curb cut, and then a large, commercial-type curb cut, and then another home with another smaller curb cut. Anytime we can eliminate the need for curb cuts on Macomb Street, it will just help with travel along the road, help with, you know, basic access management standards. That's another item I definitely want to make sure we talk about this evening. Loading, again, given the nature of the site, there is not a dedicated loading space. This is not a restaurant. This is not a site that will be selling goods at retail. I don't really think there's the need for a fully dedicated loading space. I think any deliveries that come to the site will be very short-term in nature. It might be an ex-truck, something that, in all honesty, probably will just be able to utilize front parking area, front drive area, deliver a couple of packages quickly and get back on site without causing any real disruption to traffic. We've had similar situations to that in the past, and we've usually been okay not requiring a fully dedicated loading zone. I do request that the applicant present for us tonight and/or at least confirm my suspicions that that's the only types of deliveries they'll have. Obviously, if they're going to have larger deliveries, semi-trucks accessing the site, I think there's potentially some issues with that. Navigate the site, at least not... But I don't, I don't expect that to be the case. Landscaping, so this is another one. There are proposed plantings. As I mentioned earlier, we've got some in the front for a green belt, some to screen the parking, some as the rear buffer zone between the residential and the Macomb Street District. But in each particular case, there are deficiencies in terms of plantings. There generally are not enough plantings in terms of quantities, and then there are a number of plantings proposed that do not meet minimum sizes, so some of the, some of the sizes will have to be increased, and then also some of the quantities, in my opinion. Landscaping is one of those elements where planning commission also has discretion, so it really comes down to comfort level of the commission. Now, I would suggest at a minimum, we'd like to see the minimum number of plantings required throughout the site be included on the site. Maybe there's some trade-off from the east buffer zone versus the west buffer zone. If we can come to an arrangement with maybe a shared drive to the west of the proposed building, I can certainly see modifying the west buffer zone to allow that to occur. But I do think that the items such as the rear buffer zone, which is a more intense buffer zone because it abuts residential zoning to the north, as well as the green belts, I think those are pretty important items. We want to make sure that we have at least minimum standards met there, and then potentially there would be... ...sides, whether that's in this format with the driveway this near the east slot line, or whether it's a revised plan with a shared access to the west. There may be some consideration for that. I do have all the details laid out in terms of numbers, which the petitioner does have, by the way. Landscaping, refuse removal, so that's another one, where again, kind of a small site, not a super intense use. They do not have a dedicated waste receptacle and enclosure area. I'm not sure that they need one, quite honestly. What I have requested, and again, another item I'd like the petitioner to present to the commission, would be the method they anticipate using for refuse removal, since they don't have a dumpster. My guess is it's a small office space. They may generate a little bit of trash. It's probably something that can be handled with conventional residential curbside pickup, get a couple of wheelaways, put them out for pickup, take them back. If that is the case, I would want to make sure that we at least confirm that those would be stored inside the building during, obviously, election. I'd like them to be inside the building so that they don't become eyesore or nuisance for residents surrounding, but that's another one. Again, I'm just looking for confirmation of how they... There's a note on the plans that there are a couple of proposed wall-mounted light fixtures on the front of the building. Those are not shown on the elevations. There are no fixture details provided in the submittal. Obviously, if there's any exterior site lighting proposed, we need to see details. If that's all they do, the ordinance allows us to waive the requirement for photometric plan. I think if there's just two decorative fixtures on the front of the building, I'm not sure we need a full foot candle reading of the front parking lot. There are no light, or there are no parking lot light poles proposed. So if there were something like that, I think we'd want to see a lot more detail. I'm of the opinion that if it's just a couple of decorative fixtures on the front of the building, as long as we see that detail and see that the light is cast outwards and not upwards, probably, that would suffice for me, but I guess... I referenced earlier my discussion of the elevations, that we're still missing a description of the siding, as well as the rear elevation. Reiterate that we'll need to see material color samples at some point. No signage was shown in the package, either ground or wall mount, so if there are going to be signs proposed, then we'll obviously want to see details of the signage with the next submittal. And then last one is tied to your, that I have, is just tied back to the Tree and Woodlands Protection Ordinance, and I just drove by the site tonight, and I really didn't even pay any attention. I don't believe there are any existing mature trees in the, in the area, so I think we're pretty safe in terms of not needing a tree removal permit, but I wanted confirmation. I hadn't been to the site in a while when I wrote that last review letter. I had asked for confirmation in my letter and my presentation, but the more I think about it, I don't believe it out there. And then the last one is just a common point, that anything that we get back from fire, police, engineering have to be addressed as part of this process. The plans were submitted to fire, they were submitted to engineering. We're supposed to, Russ and I kind of missed each other at Rains, so I've not had any follow-up with him yet in terms of what any initial engineering concerns are. We did get the plans back from fire that were signed off on by the fire chief.
Very good, thank you, Brian. Let's hear from the applicant, Mr. Perry or Ms. Martin? Give us your name again and your address.
Edward Perry, 8550 Macomb Street.
Welcome, welcome to the planning commission. Quite an ambitious plan here. Brian has talked about a lot of things, and again, the purpose of tonight's review is not to ask for answers to every one of these questions, because that's, okay, that's something that'll come in when you submit a final site plan, but we do need to know, you know, a little bit more about, about the, about the business itself and the uses and employees, that sort of thing, as well as addressing some of the bigger issues that Brian had, like things that are not discretionary, like the setbacks, you know, how, how can this be managed? Driveway width, obviously a big concern. So I'd like to stick with the, kind of the big picture, so that when you, when you leave here, you have a good sense of the things that are of most significance as you review your plan. Is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well then, first, tell us about your business. What is this business and what's, what's the strategy here? What are you working on?
I'm a family business. Been in business 23 years now. Light remodel, general construction, but mainly exterior finish work is our, what all my family members are geared towards and skilled at.
And this, this new facility has office and storage, and this would be your, your business home, basically?
Yes, just a personal office place, a place to contain day-to-day minor inventories, recycling, things that we like to do with aluminum and cardboard and things that are everyday things that we recycle, and we need a place to store and so on and so forth.
Do you envision that in your office area, in addition to, I don't know how many employees you have would be working there, but customers coming?
From time to time, there could be a site plan review or a pre-construction meeting at, during normal business hours, which are 7:30 to 5:30, something along those lines. Right now, we have two family members working inside the business as employees, small business.
Employees, and you would be potentially using that office to review potential projects with potential customers at, sometimes?
Yes, from time to time, but a lot of that's done in the field. I'm a field coordinator, manager. A lot of our pre-construction meetings and so on and so forth are done in the field where we can look at what we're talking about and have a real feel for it, so most of my work is done from site to site.
Would your, the garage space and this sort of thing be used for, like storing all your tools and supplies and, I mean, things that would be going on the job? Is that what that's for?
Mainly for waterproof coverage of a vehicle or two and/or ladders. We use wooden ladders still, stuff that we'd like to keep out of the, out of the elements, basically.
That'd be what would be on the inside?
Yes, my plan is to have everything 100% contained inside the footprint of this building.
Okay, no outside storage of anything?
No, sir.
Let's see. In terms of, in terms of the layout of the site and the size of the building, how was that determined? How did you decide, you know, the building was going to be this size as opposed to a little bit smaller, a little bit bigger?
Well, generally, it was, the design process started a year or so ago, and typically it was, or it was very small to begin with, so I went through the codes and the requirements of the lot coverage and all that, and it was designed to be in compliance as much as we could. I know there's deficiencies still... I know there's deficiencies still that have been overlooked, but we worked diligently to try to design it to the ordinance of the township and MSD district.
Very good. All right. Let's discuss some of the key points that Brian raised. I think the first one would be the parking, the size of the parking spaces and the setback, and that 25-foot setback in the front. Is that something that you're going to be able to adjust?
I believe so. That's new to me tonight, so I'm going to have to sit down and wrap myself around that and work with my architect and planner on that to see what we can do to situate things in a more viable solution for it, you know?
Brian expressed a lot of concern about the width of the driveway, running up the right side or the west, that'd be the east side of the property. Is that driveway going to turn into a garage? What's, when you say, you know, we didn't get the rear view, or we didn't get the side view on the east side to be able to look at that. So it's not clear to me exactly what's over there. I didn't see a big garage door or anything on your other side view.
Yes, and that was one of our delinquencies with our picture that we depicted, but the east and west sides are very similar in design. The rear of the garage, where the interior parking spots, there would be a 16-by-8 overhead door to the north of the building.
Garage doors on the rear, is that parking on the rear? Or what is, okay, what's in the rear shows us, I thought was, Brian said, parking spaces. Is that actually the entrance to the garage? I mean, how does that, how is that, how do you envision that working?
Yeah, the north of the building is 30-foot in width, and we will show you a rear elevation depicting a 16-foot wide by 8-foot high, north-loaded garage to allow me, myself, or one employee to park inside the building.
Okay, so there wouldn't, so when we're talking about parking spaces outside the building, that's really not, the parking is inside the garage?
That's correct. There's, at this time, there's two proposed inside and two in the front to meet the minimum requirement of this size structure.
I see. So what you have in the back then is a turning area, basically, to allow you to pull in and pull out and?
Yes.
Okay. What about, do you have any other big pieces of equipment? Brian expressed a concern, for example, about trailers, or, I don't know, I don't know how, what other kind of equipment you might have that you would be bringing here.
Yes, I do own a 16-foot trailer that we use for moving, mainly trash for the project we've been working on for the last two years. It's been kind of our catch-all for, to keep things in there for now, and hopefully, that'll be going away when we're completed with the project to the west.
Are there any other points that you feel you would like to raise for us tonight before we ask commissioners and the public for opinions?
No, I do want to say that through my design process with my architect, we did take into great consideration that we are situated in between two residential homes, one being mine and my fiance's, a story and a half, and then the one to the east, larger and longer. So there was great consideration in respect to that in the design process of the building itself, to make it a cross between a residential structure and a commercial structure with the hardy siding, the wrought iron railings. So it's not quite looking like a full commercial building, but yet, obviously, it's not a house either. But we're trying to land in the middle to complement the neighborhood and keep it a little more residential-looking because of the amount of residential homes on either side.
That's a very important point, because McComb Street with its mixed uses needs that compatibility, so I'm glad you factored that into your thinking.
Thank you.
Okay. Tell you what, why don't you have a seat for a minute there, and we'll hear if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak about this. Please, good evening, come on up, give us your name, please, and your address.
First of all, I'll say, I hereby request-
Sir, your name?
My name is Jess Harvey.
Yes, Harvey?
Harvey, I live at 8532 McComb Street.
8532, so you would be the neighbor to the east?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Harvey, what can, what would you like to say to us tonight?
Well, I hereby request that my following statement in its entirety be read into the record and become part of the public record of this meeting.
It will be contained in our minutes.
My name is Jess Harvey, the owner of 8532 McComb Street, a historical 100-year-old home and former resident, residence of famous island artist Carl Baternay. I've lived here amidst a cluster of four single-family residences in the McComb Street District for the past 18 years. I am presently retired, but continue to be a licensed real estate agent in the state of Michigan. I have 30 years' experience in commercial industrial real estate, and at one time was an executive at Ford Motor Land Development, responsible for all sales and leasing activities within the 3,000-acre Fairlane development surrounding Ford Motor Company in Dearborn. The immediate home to my west, known as Lot 12, 8550 McComb Street, and the adjoining 50-foot vacant Lot 11, which abuts my westerly property line, were purchased about two years ago by Ed Perry and Trina Martin. I have witnessed the transformation and heard the activity for the past two years, and it appears as though the home portion of the project is nearing completion, just in time for the next two-year cycle of construction and activity on the currently submitted proposed plan. It is my understanding that Mr. Perry's son and family will be living in the home. A new garage was constructed on the lot to replace the older garage that was demolished and removed. The lot is currently serviced by a residential approach and a gravel driveway. Proposal for Lot 11 calls for the construction of a 30-by-61-foot, 1,830-square-foot footprint, two-story office, shop, storage, garage building, 3,660 square feet total, including the second Regarding the floor plan, by omission or perhaps by design, the floor space identification labels are nebulous and don't identify shop space within the building. However, a shop lavatory is identified, so by association, we can assume the unlabeled space to be shop. Upper garage is also a somewhat nonspecific label as to what's going to go on the upper portion of the garage. I don't know of any vehicles that will float up to the second floor. This is significantly larger than my home and will be situated just 10 feet from my western lot line. Plan is calling for the construction of a new commercial width approach and a 24-foot wide driveway to border my westerly lot line, and then narrowing to 8 feet along the communal north-south fence line, and continuing north for the entire length of the proposed structure to provide access to two parking spaces in the rear. This does not meet code requirement for safe two-way travel or for a proper radius turn in order to access the two rear parking spaces. The fire chief has indicated that this is acceptable, in his opinion, as the owner states, and I quote, "The driveway will only be traveled lightly," unquote. I categorically reject this logic and notion, as this cannot be quantitatively verified or assured at the present or into the future. Furthermore, this understanding of use is not guaranteed if the property changes ownership or if the use changes in the future. I am totally opposed to this weak and unprecedented solution, as it is a major concern for not only safety, but for the desired aesthetics of the MSD and its overall negative effect on my proximate home's appearance, and thus its value. After reviewing the proposed plan and performing a visual survey and walk of the entire length of the MSD, I discovered only two single-family residences that are as close to commercial office buildings as what Mr. Perry is proposing. In both examples, the properties have been grandfathered for some time, and conditions precedent would need to be acknowledged in both instances. I found no other examples of a building as proposed by Mr. Perry to exist so close to a single-family residence. Thus, it is my opinion that Lot 11 is not of sufficient size to meet the requirements of the proposed building and/or paved areas. In addition, it does not address the required sensitivities and noise issues created by its immediate adjacency to my single-family residence. While the proposal at face value may seem to meet the zoning requirements established by the township for building use, the approval process must include thoughtful consideration, particularly as it relates to the impact it will have now and forever into the future on the quality of life and the quiet enjoyment of the immediately neighboring single-family home. I mean no disparagement to Ralph's Lawn Mower's service property or building, but will only use it as an example for illustrative purposes. Its footprint, design, and its appearance closely approximate the proposed building, if one can imagine another floor stacked upon it. Now imagine this being placed 10 feet from my lot line. To my knowledge, there are no other existing examples of this proximate mixed use in the entire MSD. Now imagine the noise from the lawn equipment being run and tested at all hours of the day and night. As producers of noise, how are carpenters' power tools any different? The nature of the construction business necessitates the use of noise-producing power equipment. The petitioner can state categorically that there will never be a shop and power tool operation within the premises, but how do we receive guarantees of this being the case, particularly after hours and on weekends? I would ask the Planning Commission to carefully review the proposed plan, particularly the following items. Number one, the total allowable square footage. Number two, the lot coverage ratio LCR. Number three, the total impervious coverage. Number four, review all possible considerations for noise control, such as limited hours of operation, and the inclusion of noise-reducing materials for soundproofing. Transmission of noise from within the building should be in accordance to the national standards' best practices, or 65 dB, whichever is less. Number five, at the time of my review, an east and north elevation were not available. I can only assume that the second-floor eastern window placement is a mirror image or similar to those on the west elevation. The only view to be had will be directly into my upper bedroom windows and bathroom windows. Therefore, I ask that these be deleted completely. Light is an issue or concern, then stationary or ventilated skylights are a suitable alternative, as are light tubes. Number six, all exterior lighting needs to be controlled in a downward fashion, as to not shine into my home. Number seven, and this is very important, in accordance with 285-7.1C, McComb Street District uses, uses may generate more noise and activity. Therefore, uses directly adjacent to residential uses are required to provide ample setbacks, buffering, screening, and sensitive site design. Very important. Given the nature of the building, its intended use, and the proposed non-conforming, one-way eight-foot alley adjacent to the easterly shared fence line, the planting of tall, growing arborvitus at a minimum of one every three feet, or as called out in professional landscaping best practices, a four-adequate screening are hereby requested. Plannings will commence at the northernmost point of the shared fence line and continue uninterrupted and terminate at the sidewalk to the south. All plannings to be maintained and replaced in a timely manner if necessary. Number eight, it shall be acknowledged that according to 285-7.3, outside storage is prohibited. I've seen instances of this to date, and want to let that be known. Number nine, 285-7.2 (8), more than 50% of the total usable floor area shall be used for servicing, repair, or processing. I guess that could mean shop space as well. Ten, 285-7.2 (12), one single-family dwelling unit on the same lot as non-residential uses specifically permitted in the MSD, meeting the area and bulk requirements of 285-7.4, and providing at least 1,000 square feet of usable floor area is allowed. Number eleven, 285-7.3F (H), where the rear or side facades of a building will be visible from a residential zoning, as in my neighbor in the rear zoning district, or the rear or side yard will be used for public access or parking, such facades shall be constructed to a finished quality comparable to the front facade. In summary, the submitted proposal is plagued with deficiencies and non-conforming uses that may be impractical or impossible to solve. More nuanced solution that addresses the difficulties while providing a much more sensitive and thoughtful approach to my concerns as a neighbor are as follows. Number one, abandon the current plan for the easterly 24-foot wide driveway adjacent to my home and the non-conforming eight-foot wide driveway to the rear of the building. Number two, merge the two lots into one commercial lot. That's why I made reference to 285-7.212, which allows a single-family residence to be on the same lot as a non-residential usage. Number three, service the new lot with a new commercial width approach apron so that it connects to the existing gravel driveway adjacent to the home, 8550 McComb. There is room to widen the driveway to the 24-feet-wide commercial standard in this However, there appears to be a great deal of flexibility and latitude within the township's zoning ordinance, as LSL Planning and the Grosso Fire Chief have already been on the official record regarding their acceptance of the concept of the 24-foot wide driveway and approach, and then the narrowing to 8 feet wide, as is presently proposed for the easterly side of Lot 11. Therefore, logic and good sense would only follow that it would also be acceptable if the same design and standard were applied to the home's approach apron and the same 24-foot wide driveway to a point immediately adjacent to- 24-foot wide driveway to a point immediately adjacent to the home, and then reduced in width to the same dimensions as is proposed running along my property line, eight to 10 feet wide, to service the property. Of course, it would be a mirror image of what's being proposed tonight. Page two of the supplied agenda for tonight's meeting includes a significant and important quote from LSL Planning. And I quote, "Given the low traffic volumes expected for this site, the reduced width is not a significant concern, in our opinion. Furthermore, we requested review by the fire chief, who informed community development that the proposed design is acceptable." Since Mr. Perry has already admitted, and I quote him, that the driveway will only be traveled lightly, moving it, as I have proposed, will have no deleterious effect on his home, 8550 Macomb Street. Two-way ingress and egress can then adequately service the needs of the home, the residential garage, the proposed building, and the required four parking places. Garage doors may need to be placed on the northwest corner of the building instead of the north side rear, because the two proposed rear parking places, when occupied, will block access to the rear of the building. Although not favored by the township, two additional spaces could then be accommodated parallel to the front of the building and directly off of the 24-foot wide drive. Additionally, driveway and parking space could also be achieved by reducing the proposed width of the building to 24 feet, as an example, instead of 30. This is adequate length for indoor parking for most vehicles if they were to come in from the side instead of the rear of the building. This may ameliorate all the previous setback issues. Specifically, the township makes it clear that their preference for parking is in the side and rear yards. Of important note is that all commercial buildings within the MSD that I observed are adequately serviced by a single driveway. Not only does this better comply with code... Not only does this better comply with code. Sections 205-9, only one access point is permitted unless others are determined necessary, and Section 205-10, where practical commercial access shall be from a shared driveway, but it also creates a more pleasing and less cluttered look from the street. In all probability, the petitioner will not favor this more comprehensive plan because it shifts the noise, traffic, and lot issues squarely back into his own hands where it belongs. This is his project, it's not mine. However, it is a shared solution that works and is fair to all parties. Again, please note that allowances stated in 285-7.2 (12). In addition, the end result will be much more aesthetically pleasing in accordance to the goals of the Macomb Street District. I thank you for your time and due consideration. I would be most grateful to receive a copy of this board's recommendations via mail once they're made available, and I hereby reserve my right to obtain counsel in the future. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Would it be possible for us to either get a copy of the writing that you obviously have there directly to our staff so that they can include it in the minutes?
Sure.
That would be helpful for us. Obviously, you have given us a great deal of thought and put quite a bit of work into reviewing ordinances and the like as related to this project, and we certainly always appreciate an informed citizen. That's a great thing. One thing I would correct you on, and that is the relationship between LSL Planning and this commission. Brian Borden, as our LSL planner, is only an advisor. He makes zero decisions.
Well, I understand that, and I don't think I implied that.
Okay, well, I got the impression that...
No, sir, I was only...
You don't put him in the same category, for example, as the fire chief. If the fire chief comes back to us and says no, the answer is no, because he is a decision-maker for the township.
Well, I understand that.
Brian Borden is simply an advisor.
I only mentioned each of them because they were both quoted in the pamphlet of information that was presented for this evening's meeting. That's the only reason.
Very good, so we're clear on that.
Nothing more than that.
Okay, good. All right, what we're going to do now at this point...
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Harvey. What we're going to do at this point is go and see if there's anybody else who has comments about this item. Okay. I think we have a fair amount to discuss at the Planning Commission level here, so why don't we get started? I'm going to start with Jay.
Thanks, sir. So, when I opened up the packet, I was very pleased with the elevation. I think it's, you know, and when I realized where it was and tying in the copper to the house next door, I thought, this is great, and had confidence that, you know, whatever issues there were identified in the write-up could be worked out, and I'm still hopeful that that's the case. I mean, it has taken a while, I understand, as was noted, but it's a very fine-looking residence. In my opinion, it is a nice addition to Macomb Street, the work that was done there. I'm hopeful that the new building, if and when it's built, is also a nice addition. I did have some concerns, though, as I looked at it, that the site plan seemed to shift the burden of the construction. You know, it seemed to minimize the impact on the existing home, the owner's home, and shifted it to the neighbor, and so I was hopeful that we could work out some ways. I was hopeful that the neighbor would have been, you know, consenting to these things, and that's apparently not the case. And so, you know, we aren't here to rework the plan. I don't want to propose myself, you know, others are free to do that. But I do want to just voice the concern that, you know, I think we have to be concerned not only about the existing residents and residents, the people, who live in the existing homes currently and the existing tenants of the proposed building, but also those that will come in the future and their uses and all that sort of thing. So, we try to take a longer view of those things, and so, you know, urge Brian to work with the applicant, to work through some of these concerns. Specifically, I think, you know, just stating my own opinions on this, because I think Brian is giving some guidance towards how we work things. And so, you know, kind of my views on this, I'm not overly concerned about the fact that there is street-side parking. I do understand that there are certain things that we can and cannot allow, setback being one of them, but street-side parking is something, and I wouldn't be concerned about that. I'm also not concerned about the number and size of plantings specifically, but I am concerned that they are, you know, sufficient to maintain the appropriate look of the area and that it's a sufficient buffer to the neighbors. And so, you know, but I am concerned, I think, about the impact on the neighbor. I'm concerned about the, you know, those sorts of things that have been raised. You know, there were concerns when I walked in. I can see that they are not the sort of thing that has been favorably worked out with the neighbor, as was indicated. And so, I would recommend that we go back and try to figure out ways to make those things better. Process, I am concerned that an eight-foot-wide path, I'm not concerned about two-way traffic in the least. I am concerned about trailers and trucks and, you know, F-250-type, you know, whether that's exactly what the tenant owns or not, I don't know, but, you know, the wide trucks and trailers and that sort of thing in an eight-foot area is awfully tight. And so, you know, little things can be squeezed out, if six inches is enough or another foot is enough, you know, those sorts of things, I leave that to Brian and the applicant to work out where those things can be, but those are the concerns that I would be most looking to see were addressed as we move forward.
Thank you, Jay. Steve.
Thank you to Brian and your great work and the applicant, and to Mr. Harvey for the comments. So, Jay summed up a lot of just things for consideration. I also am not too concerned about the two-way path, nor actually am I concerned too much about storage. I think there's plenty of other real examples on Macomb Street that are alive right now, where if they wanted to address things, there's a lot of other current examples that could be addressed, other than a hypothetical future example here. Sufficient buffer, I do agree, on the north side of the lot, where we do see some shrubbery, and then the east side of the lot, I do feel definitely that there should be something, both low-level visibility for protection, and then the point about the windows on the east side, I think, is also something that's important, that when we would see an elevation sometime down the road, that would be a good point for consideration. The only other thing that, for either my commission members up here or Brian, is it advantageous or just easier with, or if the rules are different, if there would just be a formal joining of the lot and call it an accessory building, accessory structure, or make a connection and call it a garage?
Brian?
Well, it's a lot of different ways to answer that one. I mean, were it simply a garage, that would be one thing. This is clearly something much more than a garage. We really, we can have a mixture of uses on the same lot, but I think we still need to treat this as its own principal use, AKA, site plan review is still required. There are limitations, for starters, you know, the size. If we were to try to call this a detached accessory building and it were simply a garage, there are size limitations we'd have to deal with. 1,900-square-foot garage is probably a little larger than what we would have. For instance, so, I see what you're getting at, and I understand the neighbor's idea to whether the lots are combined or whether the driveway is reversed to the middle with a shared driveway for easement. The mechanism that has that occur, I don't know that that really matters as much to me as much as actually the function of doing that.
Well, definitely if the...
Sir, excuse me, you don't have the floor.
Definitely if the opportunity exists to vet those out further with you, if it helps in the end result, getting to a more, I guess, amenable plan for both parties, then maybe that something has to be vetted out and the rules that apply to those scenarios. That's all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Steve. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank the applicant as well as Mr. Harvey for their comments, and I also want to say that it's great to see potential development on Macomb Street. I think it's well-needed, you know, with the economy turning around, starting to see stuff going in. I was very encouraged by the form of the building, as far as the aesthetics, especially with the balcony fronting the front of the lot and basically having the potential for, you know, more eyes on the street and creating that sense of place. And based on the elevations that were supplied, it does look aesthetically pleasing, but that being said, as Mr. Borden had mentioned, you know, there's details as far as that the types of materials and more information on the elevations I'd like to see. As far as the second floor, one thing, and I could be wrong on this, but it looked like the second floor was only accessible from the outside, and then the way I was looking at it is that this could potentially be two separate, you know, businesses in this property in the future, and based on that, I did not see a lavatory on the second floor. So, it looks like, you know, if you are on the second floor, you're going to have to walk outside and then, you know, walk around to the front and use the lavatory on the first floor. But, you know, another concern of mine was specifically because of that access, you know, providing a sidewalk that wraps around the building, so connecting the front sidewalk area, you know, to that side area, but even more concerning with that would be connecting that sidewalk from the building back to Macomb Street sidewalk, the one that goes east and west along the roadway, and then just having a very large, you know, parking lot and 24-foot-wide driveway apron is something that I think kind of does a disservice to the potential design and form of this building and how it's supposed to be, you know, basically meeting the spirit of the Macomb Street District. You know, I was concerned about the front yard parking, and as well as, you know, the location of the building being a little bit farther set back than the others in the area. It'd be nice to see it more in line with the fronts of the other buildings. But, you know, the major concern was the sidewalk connecting, you know, from the building to the major sidewalk, as well as the driveway and that driveway width and putting it on to the east side of the area. So, much like Mr. Borden had mentioned and Mr. Harvey, I kind of sketched some stuff out and was trying to figure out, you know, ways that might be, you know, other alternatives to still see this, you know, potential development, because it's very encouraging, but also minimize some of those impacts, you know, to the neighbors, as well as make it a little bit more pleasing from a walkability and bikeability perspective on Macomb Street.
Thank you, Brian. Dan?
The Macomb Street District's definitely unique, that it has commercial and residential in the same district, but they're both permitted uses. So, I was looking at it from that aspect. First is with the parking. I really don't have a problem with the parking. I was looking that, for one, directly across the street, there's parking right up in the front yards, within the front yard, and also a couple of doors down on the other side of the street or the north side of the street, there's parking in front of the buildings there. So, it's not something out of place for that immediate area. I do like the ideal of flipping, basically, the parking maneuvering around the other side, just because having, you know, basically not having any buffer zone on the east side, you know, not only does that not meet the requirements, but also I think being that there's a residence directly adjacent, it makes that buffer even more important. And having a shared driveway on the west side, shared driveways are something that is encouraged in the Macomb District, so I see that as being a good thing. Basically, my biggest concern was having, you know, all the, most of the buffers were buffer areas were deficient far as the plantings, but I was most concerned about the buffer zone to the east. I was kind of glad to find out that the other, the buffer zone to the west, that the owner of the proposed building owns that property, because I was concerned about both sides, so those residents having no buffers, essentially.
Thank you, Dan.
My thoughts on this evolved as I was studying the plans and looking at the site. When I first looked at the drawings and I looked at the information that Brian gave me, I was struck by the fact that there were 20-some-odd issues that were open. And typically, over the years, when you see a first response from Brian that has that many issues, you have to ask a fundamental question. It's a small lot and too much is being built on it. That invariably causes all of, you know, all of the issues with dimensions and landscaping and the like, where you try to overbuild on an individual piece of property. So, that was my first impression on it. My second impression was tailored around the fact that when I looked closer at the information and found out that the owner of this, of the house to the west, is in fact the applicant for this proposal to the east, then the whole concept of why this site plan is presented the way it's presented made no sense to me. I had many of the concerns, you know, after I walked the site and saw what was there, how this plan, and particularly...
how this plan, and particularly the approval of a driveway running up the side that's only eight feet wide, how that made any sense at all, in the big scheme of things, when there's a perfectly sensible option available to the owner of the property to the west? And so, and I have to say, I was quite flabbergasted that the fire chief approved that. Now, did he see the drawings? That amazes me, because in prior site plans, this would have never flown, and I don't understand it. But, irregardless, functionally, it makes no sense to me. I think there's a lot better ways that this development, which, by the way, I am for, I am for development, you know, and having a nice facility on the island, and on Macomb Street, and recognizing that, you know, mixed use is exactly what Macomb Street is supposed to be. It's supposed to be residential, and it's supposed to be, you know, light, office, these sorts of facilities, and they are compatible, if the design is correct. Okay? And fundamentally, as I look at this, this design, to me, is not correct. And, you know, I won't get into the little minor details about, you know, where bushes go, or windows, or any of that stuff. Fundamentally, you need, the applicant needs, in my opinion, go back, take a different look at this thing, and basically, basically, basically look at it from the context of how, with this development and with this business, he is going to minimize the impact on the neighbor, yet still meet his needs, and meet the standards of Grosseo Township. So, I think there's a lot of work to be done here. I think there's potential to do this, and do it very well, but, to my thinking, this is not the plan. So, I went all the way around on this, as I studied it. So, I hope that Mr. Perry, you'll listen to what this commission has said, and consider it, as you move forward. Brian Borden will be happy to, again, provide any advice or guidance that he can, to help with interpretation of ordinances. You know, if you so need it, you know, we have a concept review committee of the officers of this commission, which will meet with you and discuss options, if that would be helpful. You know, we're here to help. But in the end, what finally gets built has to be good for Macomb Street, good for your business, and good for Grosseo Township. So, that's my thoughts. I think that, at this point, completes that item. So, Mr. Perry, I hope that you will take it and run with it, and we look forward to seeing a revised site plan in the future. It is quarter to nine, let's take a five-minute recess.